She's. By town hall meeting, uh, given over.
Good evening, everyone present and all of our persons. Senior Environment Officer with Department of Mental Planning and Protection, we fall under the Ministry of Environment and Natural Resources, and we are responsible for the oversight and management of all development projects throughout the country. Um, I'm here and I'm accompanied by my colleague Tabarez Miller, and we have primary responsibility for projects in the Abaco Islands. So I usually deal with projects here on the island and travel there often to oversee and monitor a lot of projects going on here. As part of the government's renewable energy installation program, um, this project came to fruition, and it's gonna, it will be conducted here in Abaco, and there's another project proposed for the island of Eluthro. We're pleased to be here to discuss the project in its entirety, all of the environmental components, and share the details with the Abaco community, and also address any questions you have regarding this project. Usually, people ask environment versus development and sustainability, it must all come together. And ultimately, our goal is ensuring that we address power needs in a more environmentally friendly way throughout our islands, even though Abaco and Eluthro are, um, the primary focus for this iteration of the project, we expect that it will go further. We must also ensure that our terrestrial ecosystems and sensitive habitats are not compromised. So the goal is to, um, make sure as a department, the project fulfills all of the mandate under the law, as well as, uh, you know, all of the monitoring systems and management systems must be in place to ensure, you know, proper guidance is done with this project. Each development project must go through an environmental regulatory process, and the department is responsible for overseeing that process. Um, whether it's government, whether it's private, we aim to ensure that compliance is at the helm of everything that we do. So on behalf of Director Rihanna Neely, I'm happy to be here to assist with addressing any needs or any environmental questions or queries regarding the process, and we helped to further strengthen our ties here in Abaco with all of the development going on here. And I want to now turn over the mic to the consultants who will be responsible for the project, they will give further guidance, they will introduce themselves, and explain further what the work will be done here in Abaco. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Miller. Cartwright, and so to introduce myself, my name is Errol Farkason, and I'm the CEO of the company EA Energy. So EA Energy is the company that is going to be tasked with this development here in Abaco as well as in Eluthro. So we're going to start our slide presentation here now, um, as we move forward in. So we're going to talk a little bit and give a brief executive summary, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about the project itself. So EA Energy Limited was a special purpose vehicle company that was, uh, awarded, uh, the contract to be able to build this hybrid microgrid power plant here for Eluthro as well as Abaco. And our company will be responsible for the design, the financing, the construction, the operation and maintenance of the facility, and it's a long-term operation for 25 years that we'll be doing that. So the situation overview is just basically where in November of 2022, the government of the Commonwealth of Bahamas released an updated version of its national development, uh, took its nationally determined, uh, contribution, maintaining a 30% reduction target in greenhouse gas emissions, and a commitment to achieving at least 30% renewable energy in its energy mix by the year 2030. So as a part of this strategy, they collaborated with, uh, the Bahamas Power and Light Company and issued an RFP in December of 2023. And this RFP aimed to establish long-term solutions for Eluthro and Abaco as well as other islands, there were other islands that were a part of this, uh, RFP process, um, but EA Energy was awarded for Eluthro and Abaco specifically, so to replace the aging and inefficient power, power plants. So the final award letter to EA Energy was issued in September 11, 2024, confirming our selection to implement the energy and energy storage systems on Eluthro, including Harbor Island and Abaco, including the surrounding Keys. So EA Energy Limited, we signed the long-term, what we call the Power Purchase Agreement with, um, BPL, which is the overarching contract between us and BPL, um, on the, on actually the, the 31st of March, it says that for the development and operation of a hybrid energy gener- generation facility in Eluthro and Abaco. Consus Energy, which is a subsidiary of Global Holdings International, Global Investment Holdings, and Verdant Company Limited, which is a Bahamian entity specializing in energy infrastructure and clean energy initiatives, are both shareholders, 50/50% shareholders at the beginning of this process for EA Energy. So Consus Energy brings its expertise in renewable energy and sustainable power solutions, and they're based out of, uh, Turkey, Turquia. While Verdant Company, which is a local Bahamian company, focuses on enhancing the Bahamian, the Bahamas' energy resilience through local industry knowledge and clean energy initiatives. So it was, uh, uh, this combination of Consus as well as Verdant that put together the package that won the, the contract, and we formed EA Energy out of that. So basic, uh, some basics, uh, data on the project overview, we see that the gas engine capacity, and these will be, uh, liquid LNG gas engines that we're going to be using, for Eluthro we have 20 megawatts, and for Abaco we'll have 30 megawatts in store capacity. Uh, for solar capacity, 10 for Eluthro and 15 megawatts for Abaco. For the battery storage capacity, we're going to have 10 megawatt hours for Eluthro and 15 for Abaco. So the total generation for Eluthro, we'll have is 79 million kilowatt hours and 118 million kilowatt hours for Abaco. And, uh, the general basic project timeline, you can see there, our PPA, like I mentioned, was signed this year, just, just a few months, uh, ago. Our design work and building permit, which has been going on for some months now, from since we were awarded it, we've been working at this, but we expect to finish that between the second and the third quarter of this year, and we expect to start the construction in the third quarter of this year, 2025. And then our scheduled commercial operation date is the third quarter of 2026, and our 25-year PPA term will end in Q2 of 2051. So the key parties to the project, so this slide shows that EA Energy being the company that's going to be driving this project, the shareholders initially, like, like I mentioned, was 50/50 Verdant and Consus Energy. And then we have the agreement, the power purchase agreement with BPL, which also includes an interconnection agreement, as well as, uh, we have a land lease agreement with the government for the properties that we'll be using for the installation of the, um, the solar panels and the, and the power station. Um, they have engaged this company, ECF, which is called the Owner's Engineer, they are overseeing and they're working with us to develop the design for the power, power stations, to make sure that everything is being done properly, to make sure that we are, uh, meeting the requirements of the, uh, scope of the RFP, and we've been meeting with them ever since we, uh, were, were awarded back, uh, back in November of last year. And then some of our advisors for EA Energy that we have incorporated, it's a company called Afri, who's our owner engineer, uh, that works with us to ensure our design is also being done properly, uh, Watson and Farley are our international legal counsels, our local legal counsels are Alexio Knowles and Company. IDDC are our local engineer of records, we have some representatives from them tonight, and then Russell Craig and Associates are our local, uh, environmental, um, consultants, and we'll be hearing from them tonight as well. Some of our solution partners, we show here is Iltekn, which is a company out of Turkey, will be what we call the EPC Contractor, the Engineering Procurement and Construction Contractor, who will be having to turn key project to, to implement the works, uh, of the, uh, the scope of the project. Inox, Inoxa VA is, uh, looking to be the supplier of our LNG infrastructure, re-gasification plant. And then we have Island Power Producers, which is a local Bahamian company that we will be engaging in to be our supplier for the LNG gas for the projects. So those are the main key players, uh, for the project. EA Energy and its shareholders. So initially, when we started, like I mentioned, Verdant and Consus were 50/50 shareholders of the, of the company. Now, our envision, this is our envision for where we're going to take this company, so we're going to reduce our shareholders, uh, amount in both Verdant and Consus to 37 and a half percent, and we're going to put 25% of the company out for investment for local Bahamians. We've already started that process, and we've raised a significant amount of the funds already, but the primary, one of the main parts of our fundraising, which will happen starting the middle of July, is when we're going to be offering a retail, uh, investor option for persons who want to invest a minimum of $1,000 in the company, uh, you'll be able to buy into, uh, shares into the company with that. And that'll be managed by CFAL, who are our financial advisors, and they'll be, you'll be able to contact them, and they'll be putting out information about that, and if you're interested, you can also speak to me afterwards as well. But that's how we wanted to do it, so that Bahamians are ownership, can receive ownership into this company, because it is serving the Bahamas, and I mean, it's benefiting the Bahamas, so the Bahamians should be a part of it, and that was one of our main goals for getting involved in this. And when we think about the overall cost of the, or the investment of the project, for Abaco it's $80.2 million, and for Eluthro it's going to be about $56.5 million. So overall, it's almost like $140 million between the two projects that we will be investing, and this is private funds invested, nothing from the government, this is our, our funds that we'll be raising and investing between ourselves and, uh, Bahamian investors, other investors as well. So another project overview. So why we need this project? Supporting the Bahamas' green transformation. So number one, right now, you know, we have a high dependence on, uh, fossil fuels, all of the power stations we have basically in the Bahamas run on basically diesel oil. Uh, we have maybe one or two that uses some kind of light oil, but pretty much we all use these fossil fuels. And, um, despite these initiatives, we talk about SSRG, which is initiative that BPL had to encourage, um, residential development of, um, solar panels to help with reducing that dependence, there's still a high dependence upon, uh, fossil fuels. So electricity generation still relies heavily on diesel, with aging infrastructure in Eluthro and Abaco, using heavy fuel oil and ADO, leading to ineffici- inefficiencies and regulatory challenges based on the, um, the amount of, uh, fumes and exhaust that it puts out. The next reason, the rising energy demand. So we know that Abaco and Eluthro has been seeing a lot of development over the past few years, and from our studies over the next five to 10 years, the amount of development that's going to be happening in these two islands is going to be quite, 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 quite a bit of it. And BPL with the challenges that they have, they are very challenged to be able to maintain, um, in the, the, the installation of infrastructure to be able to support these continuing developments. So they needed help. So a surge in tourism-related developments, including new homes and, and, um, residential projects, is driving significant demand growth in Eluthro and Abaco, necessitating reliable and sustainable energy solutions to support economic expansion, and the key word there is reliable and, and sustainable, because as you may have been experiencing yourself here, that the power supply and, and distribution is not always as reliable as you would like to have it. So we would like to advise that with our system, you know, we're going to be looking at higher reliabilities in the 90s, in the 90% percentile ranges for being able to provide electricity, and that is critical in terms of encouraging development and encouraging investments inside these islands. And thirdly, aging and unreliable power infrastructure. So existing power plants in Eluthro and Abaco are outdated, with some facilities over 30 years old, suffering from frequent outages and nearing the end of their operational lifespan, necessitating urgent modernization. And those are some of the actual pictures, those are actual pictures of some of the facilities that, that exist on these islands. So those are, like I said, reaching end, end of life, and they need to be replaced, need to be upgraded, and need to be maintained on a regular basis. So those are some of the rationale for these new infrastructure projects. So again, another project overview, development of critical infrastructure. So the locations of our projects in Abaco, it'll be in Wilson City, just adjacent to the existing power plant, and in Eluthro it'll be in Hatchet Bay, near, just adjacent to the existing power plant there as well. And there again, some of the technical properties, uh, that we touched on initially for both of the stations, um, for the islands in terms of the capacity and the, that'll be installed. And then the pictures that you see here, we've already done, um, topographical and geotechnical surveys on both of these islands to complete the groundwork in terms of preparation for these projects, to make sure we know what we're getting into, what the land structure is, what they can support. So we've already completed those studies, we're doing the environmental baseline assessments now, all of this before we actually start construction, to make sure everything is being done properly. The site locations again, like I said, in Eluthro Island, the plant site is, um, in Hatchet Bay, and in Abaco, it's in, um, at Wilson City. In Wilson City, we're going to have about 60 acres of, um, of the crown land that we're going to be using for the power station, which will be for the, the solar panels as well as the, the, the gas engine plant, and in Eluthro we'll have 40 acres for the project. And that's on, on the, the sites on the right side there that you see. So our proposal timeline, again, like I mentioned, basically, um, the design works in contract negotiations, March 2024, we have issued the RFP, uh, back in December of 2023, uh, we were awarded the, the, the contract in September 2024, uh, signing of our PPA was March 2025, uh, commencement of construction works on the sites, like I mentioned, is between June and July of this year. Our financing is second quarter 2025, we've, um, done, uh, the majority of that, uh, so, so, so we have the majority of funds already raised, and, uh, we have, like I said, the retail section that'll be coming up in July, the mid-July. Uh, EPC contract signing, which I mentioned is our engineering procurement and construction, uh, main contractor that'll be doing the installation, we'll be signing that in short order, probably by the end of this month, before, the end of this month, we'll be signing that. So the end of construction, we expect to be in July to August of 2026, and the end of the term in 2051. And at the end of that term, the plan is that this project, this, all of the infrastructure that we have done will be turned over to BPL as part of, um, the, the, the agreement that we have with them. So we, as a private entity, will be operating this plant for 25 years to be able to, uh, make back the investment that we made, so the government is not investing anything other than the lease of the land, so we have to make sure that the plants are running efficiently and effectively to be able to make our monies back. So that's our incentive to make sure that you get the service that you deserve, as well as that we can be able to get our investment back, um, in a, in a timely fashion. And that is a basic overview of the project, and I'll be, um, turning it over now to, uh, Mr. Chris, Christopher Russell, as our environmental consultant. Questions via the.
So good afternoon to all. I am Christopher Russell, Managing Principal of Russell Craig and Associates, a registered environmental consultancy company in the Bahamas, and we have been commissioned by EA Energy Limited to undertake the environmental baseline assessment studies and mitigation measures for this particular project in Abaco as well as in Eluthro. And so here you can see a visual of the island of Abaco, Wilson City, and inset close-up to show the actual location of the new power plant. It is just located due west of the existing plant at Wilson City. And Mr. Farkason spoke to you previously about some of the features of the actual plant, and just a quick summary again, it's located on some 60 acres of crown land, and it is a hybrid microgrid system, 30 megawatts of energy gas engines, 15 megawatts of solar plant, and 15 megawatt hours of battery storage. In terms of the results of our studies and our findings in the natural environment, the natural environment comprises what we call a dry pine forest ecosystem dominated by the pineas carabia, or what we call Caribbean pine. Caribbean pine is one of the three varieties of pines that are found in this region, the Bahamas has one of the Caribbean pine's variety Bahamensis, and so this species is protected by law in the Bahamas. And based on our surveys, we found that there are some 53 associated plant species in association with the pine forest. Pine forest is a dominant species over story, pine forest, we all know the pine forests of Abaco, and they are the pine islands. And so out of the 53 plant species, we identified some eight that are protected under the Forestry Declaration Protected Species Order, and based on our survey, we undertook six random sample plots designed, and we were able to calculate that there were some 138,000-plus species of protected plants in that 60 acres. And so on that basis, we have to determine how do we mitigate the loss of these species associated with this project. And we identified two invasives, the Kazarina and the Brazilian pepper. We also have to look at the avian species, which means birds. And as you are aware, or may not be aware, all birds in the Bahamas are protected under the Wild Bird Protection Act of 1952. And they have been classified based on the IUCN classification, and we identify, based on our observations, some 18 species of recorded birds, we saw 18 different species of birds, and we also observed one endemic, which is the Bahama marking bird. We also observed that all the birds that we observed were referred to as permanent resident breeding, all 18 species, so they are breeding in the Bahamas, okay, they are resident and they breed in the, on the island. We also have to look at biodiversity, which means anything that lives associated with this ecosystem, and based on the abundance of what we saw. And so bear in mind, we, we walked the entire 60 acres, we ground-trouled the entire 60 acres to observe what we found on the ground. And as you can see, there are many biodiversity species, we can see the classifications of them, and they're abundant, from yellow butterflies to monarch butterflies, black dragonflies, blue-tailed lizards, brown annoles, brown marts, wild boar even, okay, uh, the common snails, ladybug species, paper warts, even sparrow cats, we have a cat, sparrow cat following the island of Abaco, as you know, the Abaco island boa, which is also observed in abundance, and also we have the termites. In terms of impact from an environmental perspective, we use what is called qualitative assessment criteria, and what that means, we have a, a visual here to show what is quality criteria, meaning that we look at the nature of the impact and how it impacts the actual ecosystem, look at the type, whether it's positive, negative, look at the likelihood of certainty or not, look at the scale based on the habitat itself, and also from an island perspective, look at the duration, whether it's short-term or long-term impact, we also look at the reversibility, whether it's tend to reverse or not, and also the overall significance. So from this perspective, on this site itself, we know that in respect of the nature, it has direct impact, this project has a direct impact, in terms of 60 acres, right, will be impacted by the development of new roads, infrastructure, the power plant and the structure itself, and also associated activities. The type is going to be negative, with the loss of such a significant number of protected species, we know that the focal impact of the site will be negative for an extended period. Here we, we need to know that we have to apply for a permit or waiver from the forestry department for the, for the removal or harvest of these protected trees, okay? We know that the likelihood of the impact is going to be certain, impact and benefits will be the result of once the actions outlined are completed. From the point of view of scale, we recognize that it's from a small scale, habitual, the habitat is 60 acres, and so the, the scale is related to the 60 acres itself, there'll be loss of protected trees and a dominant pine forest ecosystem. From the point of view of island environments, we recognize that the invasive species, we can remove those on-site, the Kazarina and Brazilian pepper will be removed, which will help reduce any sea sources spreading to the larger island. In terms of duration, we recognize that it is a long-term choice in that the native plant communities will be stabilized in the adjacent areas, um, and the, outside of the actual impact, okay? In terms of reversibility, it is not reversible, it's irreversible, the damage will be done, we have to therefore employ mitigation measures to offset the loss of the ecosystem. And overall, this, it is very significant impact on the 60 acres, the actual construction of this particular power plant, it is significant, therefore we have to mitigate, employ mitigation measures to offset the losses associated with ecosystem being, being removed. Here now, we speak to the severity of the impact, how severe will the impacts be on the natural environment? So we look at first factor is the terrestrial environment, where the trees are, the severity impact is based on a scale of one to five, one is very low, tree is medium, and five is high, so that's the numbers represented. So in terms of terrestrial, we know that some, 90% of the existing landscape on the 60 acres will be removed, which includes eight protected species of, of plants, okay, based on the footprint of the actual structure. So that has a high severity impact, five meaning high. Biodiversity, wildlife, we also gave it a severity impact of five, because once you remove all the vegetation you're going to move, it's going to impact the biodiversity as well. So the birds are going to fly away, if they have nesting sites, they're going to go somewhere else, in terms of finding new sites for nesting, et cetera, et cetera. In terms of avian fauna, we gave it a rating of three, because what happens is, the noise levels will cause the wildlife to go away, to move somewhere else temporarily, they'll come back at some point later once the site is properly developed. From the point of view of visual and aesthetics, construction of the power plant will enhance the visual and aesthetic of the, of the Wilson City power plant over time. However, if you don't remove the debris associated with the construction, of course, it will impair the visual and aesthetics of the site for extended periods. Coral moraine, there is no development on the marine environment, therefore the impact will be low. From the point of view of hydrology, hydrology means water resources, so wherever you have fuels and chemicals, you may have the risk of spills, so it's very important that we mitigate any potential risk of spills, and then you have, may have some hazardous materials, hazardous waste generated from the plant. So it's very important that we deal with that issue, ensure that we have proper spill management procedures that will remediate any issues associated with spillage, okay? So the completed structures are not expected to have an adverse impact on the groundwater resources, based on the projected land use, the impact of the project on the groundwater resources will determine to be low in the long term. With respect to erosion and sedimentation, there is the potential for some soil erosion and sedimentation at the foundational footing levels once you start construction, you start clearing land, there's going to be movement of soil and so on, okay? So we propose that by the retention of a buffer zone, vegetation buffer zone around the perif- the site peripheries, will reduce the likelihood of soil erosion and sedimentation. With respect to air quality, we recognize that when you do construction activities, so, so the use of equipment and so on can generate large volumes of dust that can impact the air quality and impact human health, and so therefore we recognize there's a need for appropriate and adequate management techniques to reduce impact to human health. With respect to noise, again, we give it a rating of three, we know that noise levels tend to rise during construction activities that will disturb birds and animal species. Birds are likely to be displaced and leave the area, particularly where they're on nest sites that are disturbed. With respect to human health, we recognize that during construction, that noise levels tend to be elevated, and according to the CDC, prolonged noise level exposure above 70 decibels may cause hearing damage. With respect to solid waste and hazardous waste, we give it a rating of one. With respect to solid waste and hazardous waste, we give a rating of one because we recognize the solid waste, not adequately disposed of, can be an eyesore. Hazardous waste can pose threats to wildlife and human health through attracting pests which are disease affected. Hazardous waste not properly managed can also result in penetration into the soil for pollution of the groundwater resources. We don't want that. With respect to occupational health and safety, we give it a risk rating of high, five. Why? Because the risk of workers not wearing protective person equipment is very high. Sometimes you have workers who forget to come to work or forget their helmets or forget their vest or whatever it is, and you have to remind them, look, you have to put it on twenty-four seven. Right, it's very important. The risk is high for improper use of equipment as well and materials and non-compliant with standard safety protocols and procedures. Physical damages and potential loss of life tend to happen when you have persons who are careless and don't wear protective clothing. So for this project, of course, the risk would be high, we give it a rating of five. Fire and hurricanes, we know Abaco is synonymous with forest fires. You have fires all the time. So the risk is high for forest fires to occur in the vicinity of this project. Therefore, there's a need for fire management plan to ensure that we have mitigation, protective measures in place to put these fires out if they occur in the vicinity of the plant. Risk of the project site being affected by a hurricane during a hurricane season again in any given year is relatively high. We know what happened a few years ago with Hurricane Dorian. So there's always the risk of Abaco being impacted by another hurricane anytime soon. We are now in a hurricane season. So therefore, we know that they are, the rating is five. Land use, again, we give a rating of transformed to something else in terms of land use coming in industrial site, okay? So you have prior maximum land use and removal of existing natural vegetation. Economically, we give it a rating of five. In this case, beneficial as opposed to negative. Normally, you have everything negative. This time it's the flip. It's positive because you have a high investment of forty-five million dollars. You're going to have construction jobs between forty-five to sixty. You're going to have the humans employed on a permanent basis. And it's going to be an overall positive impact for the island of Abaco in the medium to long term. Culturally, we found no cultural resources were identified from the field study. And therefore, has a rating of one. Now we go to mitigation. Now you saw all the impacts that we recognized and how do you mitigate those impacts to the extent that we can control and make sure everything is okay? Rest of it, what do we do? Recognize and remove all this natural vegetation. So we propose that we should at least leave a buffer of vegetation on the periphery of twenty-five to fifty feet buffer of natural vegetation. Why? Because this acts as a windbreak. When you have strong winds, it can reduce the wind force coming through. It also acts as a natural biodiversity corridor. So you attract wildlife back to the area. Once the plant is established in place, you have the buffer. And then you also plant additional native species, endemic plants, flowering plants within the landscape areas, the plant to attract wildlife back to the area, okay? That's the reason why we want to maintain some vegetation, some terrestrial landscape in the design. Biodiversity again, by retaining natural buffer, you're going to attract the bird to come back again, right? Avian fauna, one, all construction activities are completed. The reduced noise level, expected that the birds will return again. Again, you have the landscaping end, you have more flowering plants, more indigenous species, you have more wildlife. Visual and aesthetic. Proper management and timely disposal of solid waste is very critical to ensure that the site is kept neat and tidy. You don't want piles of debris piling up here, there, and anywhere. It gives an unsightly attention to the one down. Again, we want to use only native and endemic plants and tree species that are in the natural landscape areas. There are the no invasive species introduced into the landscape. No Caserenas, no Brazilian peppers. We want to keep the invasive species out. In terms of hydrology, very important factor. We know Abaco is renowned for its freshwater resources. We need to make sure that we mitigate potential impact on the groundwater resource. What do we do? We employ appropriate fuel and chemical management practices to ensure groundwater resources are not impacted. Water for clothes cycle, water system to be derived from the patrician wells on-site or from the existing power plant water. Water treatment capacities not be higher than two cubic meters per hour. Use of standard one-hundred-and-fifty-feet drainage well to be utilized. Storm surge effect, the solar structures is considered to be low to moderate in the long term. All structures to be set at a minimum elevation of plus twenty feet above the existing high seawater elevation. Very important. Very important at the end, design calculations to confirm minimum wind load exposure and orientation for all structures after the solar power. Very important. In terms of geotechnical, we mentioned earlier, we had to do various studies in terms of geology, geological nature of the subsurface. And the subsurface soil profile consists of approximately three inches of relatively loose sand topsoil underlaid by the limestone formation to floor depth. Two encountered subsurface soil conditions are suitable to support encountered subsurface soil conditions that were identified, right? To support the structures on a system of shallow foundations bearing on existing limestone or engineered material. We designed the footings, we supposedly designed the footings using a maximum allowable bearing pressure of five thousand pounds per square feet and sliding coefficient of point three five, zero to four if bearing on limestone. Those are the conditions that are described for mitigation from a geological perspective. Erosion sedimentation, we propose to be with mitigation that natural buffer vegetation would limit the risk of soil erosion and sediment washout upon prevention of the land clearing activities. Excessive surface runoff, storm surge due to extreme rain events can be deemed low to moderate in the long term for the project area. In terms of air quality, we have to ensure that there are best management practices with regards to construction methods will be employed to minimize emission of dust that can impair air quality. Then maintenance of construction equipment to ensure air quality is not impaired. And parameters for air quality to be determined once the plant is functional. Noise. Workers will wear their PPEs at all times, the airflow thoroughly. Noise, now we said before, will cause the animals to migrate elsewhere. However, once construction activities are completed, animals and birds tend to come back. Solid hazardous waste, solid waste generated will be limited to construction and vegetation waste. Solid and hazardous waste will be placed in appropriate containers and properly disposed of at the Abaco landfill site per CTS regulations and standard. Fire and hurricanes, we talk about the importance of the impact mitigation and involve fire control and prevention plans. With the field staff to prevent, contain, and control fires occurring during the power station construction and installation. Power plant will follow the fire department out of the Bahamas according to code. A hurricane preparedness plan, contingency plan will be developed if Abaco island is impacted by a storm or hurricane to include escalation protocol, emergency and health revision and recovery strategy. Occupation health and safety, all workers are provided with appropriate PPEs mentioned before, workers will be trained in the proper handling of equipment before starting work in the property itself. And there will be regulated enforcement of occupational health and safety protocol. And that is my presentation. Thank you very much.
Good evening, once again. Mr. Parkinson and Mr. Russell would have shared with you all of the details related to the project. And we now welcome any questions from the audience. I did put a message in our virtual board. If there are any queries or questions that persons online had during the course of the presentations, they could feel free to ask. I didn't see any questions posted. But in facilitating this question and answer period, we ask that your questions are clear and concise, focusing on the project only, particularly the scope of works proposed as described by Mr. Parkinson and of course, the environmental implications of the project as described by Mr. Russell. So please feel free to come to the mic if there are any questions or raise your hands and feel free to ask your questions. So that everybody can hear, okay? Certainly. Please step forth. Thank you.
Well, I said, not the plant itself, but I mean, not only here. When I mentioned that some of the infrastructure between here and Eluse where there are some engines and stuff there, so yeah.
Yeah, it's a little bit low.
Well, like I said, not the plant itself, but I mean, not only here. When I mentioned that some of the infrastructure between here and Eluse where there are some engines and stuff there, so yeah.
Yeah, it's a little bit low.
Yeah.
It makes a difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and maybe some concerns. Just to back up, I think the idea of alternative energy is long overdue. I'm trying to draw bill my trumpet, but when I became chairman of BEC, one of the first things I did was to appoint a committee of engineers and economists to look at the viability and possibilities and scope of introducing alternative energy. RFPs actually went out back then. A very comprehensive report was put together. My idea was to put alternative energy plants, solar primarily, small plants and strategic places that eventually could grow as the economics of the alternative energy allowed it. Unfortunately, that was not pursued, but that's what under the bridge. My big concern is with LNG, one of them. The first question is, where will the LNG come in? Obviously, come in by ship. And LNG, of course, is quite a dangerous material, although a lot have been done to handle it safely. But nevertheless, it is a highly volatile gas. So is it going to be coming in by ship and then unloaded on trucks and then taken to the plant? Is that the idea?
Yes, and it'll be moved in its liquid form. I mean, in the liquid form, it's very inert, it's not very flammable at all. So it's, that's why we have a regasification facility that'll be here that'll convert it from liquid to gas. So when it's being transported, it'll be in the liquid form.
And that'll be done on the site?
Yeah, the conversion from liquid to gas will be done on the site.
Go to the city?
Yes. Yeah, and it'll be transported in ISO containers on, we're going to have a supply coming out of, I mentioned, island power producers. You'll have a plan in Iowa key, be able to get ISO containers loaded there and shipped from there to the port here in Marsh Harbor and transport it overland to forty-foot containers.
It will come in on containers to the port here and then taken by truck?
Yes.
To the site?
Yes.
In liquid form?
Yes.
And you're obviously happy with that?
Yes, yes. I mean, that's, as I said, I mean, that's, in that form, it's very, very not hazardous at all. Not until you convert it into gas that it becomes any kind of flammable. Not really flammable.
The other question is that you're going to the Wilton City site. Perhaps it all makes sense that that's where the power, the existing power plant is. Although at the time I became chairman, I wanted it to go to Lake Keep, which is where originally the power plant, because it's elevated land there.
Right.
Infrastructure is already existing, which would allow the ship to bring in the bunkers of fuel and pump it directly to the plant. But there was higher powers cut me down on that. So it is where it is.
Yeah.
But my concern is, a very low-lying land. In Hurricane Dorian, I think, and I stand to be corrected, but I think a lot of it was flooded. A lot of the areas was flooded by seawater. I'm just wondering if that was going to have been taken into account.
Yeah, well, I mean-
Especially with the batteries. And that's the next question, is how are the batteries? Because you're going to need a lot of batteries. I remember put forty-eight megawatts that we put in. We estimated you'll probably need about twenty acres of batteries if you're going to need a lot at that time, at that time.
I'm going to introduce Mr. Emre Ozur. He's our project director for the plant, and he's with, coming from-
Well, he can answer the question. I'll put them out and I'll just get them off.
Yeah.
That was one of my main concerns.
Yeah.
Is that the batteries also, you know, that they are high enough that if it is flooded, that they don't contaminate the area by being exposed to salt water? And also what happens to the batteries once their life is over? They have a life of about seven to ten years, I think it is.
Um, no, well, I mean, that's something, I'm not sure.
Well, he can answer that question.
Yeah, real answer, yeah. I'll let him answer that for you, yeah.
Other than that, I think it's great that, the final question, why is it taking so long till two thousand fifty-five, fifty-seven?
Yeah, two thousand-
And you're going in a boot system, I think.
Yeah, yeah, build, operate.
Build on and transfer.
Right, exactly.
So that takes place at the end of two thousand.
Yes, fifty-one, yeah.
But why is it taking such a long time?
Well, I mean, because we've got to make back over eighty million dollars that we're putting-
Oh, so that's what-
Yes, so that's where we got to make our money back, yeah.
But, okay, I understand that, I appreciate that. But does that mean it's going to have to take that long to put all of the plants in place?
No, 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 no. We're third quarter, third quarter of next year, the plant will be-
So you're going to keep it on the-
Yes, we're going to operate it, maintain it until that time, exactly. And sell power to the grid.
Okay. Well, those are my major questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'll let Mr. Ozur comment, yes.
Mr. Ozur, can you-
Thank you for your question, Mr. Ozur, appreciate it.
Yes, please come.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Welcome to here for the meeting. My name is Emre. I'm from Turkey, from Konsus. So I'm the project director for the project. So coming back to your question about the batteries, batteries each will come with a containerized system with two-point-five megawatts electric. So if we are talking about ten megawatts of battery or fifteen megawatts battery, that means six containerized solution will be on the base. So each two-point-five megawatts. So I think-
Forty, forty-five?
Yeah, no, 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 exactly. All twenty feet, all twenty feet.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet's containers. So all the type tests and all the UL and NFPA requirements will be on the table. So we will be considering all these based on the RFP given by the EPL. So coming back. So total six containers, each twenty feet for Abaco.
Six twenty-foot containers, each with a capacity of two-point-five megawatt hours.
Megawatts.
So there's containers, they're concealed containers, they're not, yeah.
It's a containerized solution, including inverters inside and transformers, power conversion system, DC to AC, all included with the DC cassettes inside. So it will be easy to be removed. But the lifespan is, we are considering now almost twenty years for each DC sets. So it will not be easy to remove.
And then disposal, I guess, after twenty years? It's a process, I guess.
For the-
The disposal of them afterwards?
After twenty years later time, the disposal will be done on the batteries. So this is the plan. And there are some companies, they have good technologies, who can provide such system. In all over the world, generally, it's almost ten years, the battery life. But here in our system, we are considering twenty years to make it more resilient and more economical and more environmental base.
I think that, is that everything, Mr. Bartley, or is there anything else?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so at the moment, our consideration for the site elevation level is thirty feet. So all site will be thirty, but depending on the inclination of the natural land because there will be solar. So all the natural inclination of the territory will be beneficial for us for the solar production. But in overall, we are going to put the site level, elevation level, thirty feet. Well, it's almost around thirty feet, depending on the twenty to thirty. So if necessary, we are going to fill it, yes. Fill and compact. Thank you.
The offerings of a thousand-dollar minimum for shares, I would think that you would come to Abakonians first.
Well, that's gonna be done, I mean...
But you've already sold some shares.
Well, we sold some high, what we call the high-end investment shares.
Well, why didn't you come to Abakor for some of that high-end investment?
Well, no, who's to say we didn't?
See, this happened with Port, this happened with Port, with Port, Awaqee. The high-end shareholders make the money. We will be receiving common shares, where you'll get forty cents around Christmas time. These high-end shareholders, I'm telling you how it works.
No, but I'm...
The high-end shareholders...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Always cashing in. People at the lower end with these thousand-dollar, just ask those who had money in Cable Bahamas, and ask those who have money in APD, those common shares. Why didn't you come to Abakor and offer some preferential shares to us first? That's question number one.
Okay, go ahead.
Twenty-five years, you turned this thing back over to government. What happens to my shares when that happened? You're gonna get your money, you and those preferential shareholders, gonna get their money, what happens to my thousand dollars?
No, but all the shareholders, all the shareholders will be bought out at the end of it. Whatever value you have, you'll get that back.
The government will buy my shares out as well?
Well, I mean, not necessarily...
My grandchildren's shares, I guess.
Say again?
My grandchildren's shares.
Well, what I should probably do, now, Seefal, who is our financial advisor, ran the program for the initial offerings that we did. And that was open, I mean, that was spread out to not, it was not limited, that actually went out to the public.
First-time hearing, anybody in Abakor?
Well, I mean, it was in the paper.
Did the paper get to Abakor?
Well, it doesn't.
Printed papers don't come here anymore.
Well, I mean, I can't, I can't do anything like that.
So I'm saying to you as CEO, do something about it.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that.
Do something about it.
If you weren't aware of that.
Have you determined what you can produce electricity per kilowatt for an hour? Have you can determine that?
We have.
And are we going to be the benefactors of that magnificent reduction in...
We're not gonna charge the public. The charge is gonna come from BPL, so that'll be their responsibility. We sell power to BPL, BPL sells the power to the public.
You know, you got some high, some pretty expensive stuff that you're gonna be using, you got the sun...
Well, I mean, that's why we're spreading it out over twenty-five years.
You got the sun.
So that we don't...
We shouldn't have to pay fuel surcharge for the sun, eh?
No, no, you're not, and you're not, you're not, trust me, you're not.
Just wanna know.
You're not, you're not, you're not gonna make it. I agree, I appreciate that.
But what happens to BPL staff? All these young men who've made this a career? When you've come, and now you're the major seller, because you are providing government, Abakor, with almost twice as much megawatts as we are using at this time and prior to Dorian?
No, well, I mean, the peak power demand, even prior to Dorian, even post-Dorian, was almost to the amount of twenty-seven megawatts.
Twenty-seven.
The peak in the summer. So typically, you know, it won't be as high as that, but twenty-seven megawatts.
But you're providing thirty in LNG?
But we're making provisions, like I mentioned in my presentation, that there's numerous projects and developments that's happening over the next three to five years that we need to make provisions for, because we don't wanna be caught shorthanded. So we have to make provisions for these things that's coming in short order, to be able to supply them the power.
So you got thirty in LNG, fifteen in solar, and fifteen in battery?
Yes.
That's still twice as much as what BPL does now.
Well, that's what I say, but I mean, if you're saying twice, like I said, if the peak was twenty-seven, that's fifty-four. So I mean, that's where it is now. But I mean, we have to make sure that we have the capacity to meet the demand.
Advertise in Abakor, please, because first time I heard about this was when they...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry you didn't hear it, but it was actually put out.
And I'm in the business of advertising, this is the first time I'm hearing it, when they contacted me.
Yeah, okay, sorry, sorry that happened, but yeah. Seefal will be doing the retail offering, like I said, in the middle of July, and we'll be putting that out. I mean, if anybody wants to contact us, I can help them. Well, I mean, I can only tell you, I mean, I can't tell if we agreed to, but what you may or may not know, I mean, I know you were the chairman of BPL, I think you would understand that, oh, sorry, at the time, that the power, the cost of the power that you're paying for right now is a subsidized rate on the family islands compared to what it actually costs producing. So you pay the same rates that we pay now, so, but in terms of the cost to produce the power on the family islands, where you have very sparse distances and very small communities providing, the actual real cost to produce is a bit more than what you actually pay. So that's an issue, but I mean, but we're gonna, I mean, we, what we're gonna be giving Well, we, yeah. Yes, yes, yes. No, 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 you're not gonna pay any more than you're, like I said, you're, what we're gonna, we're gonna be making, we have the agreement with, we have the agreement for BPL. I mean, what BPL does with the power to you, I mean, we have no control over that.
Are there any other questions or comments that you would like to make at this time? Okay, and I see no questions on the virtual message board. So I trust that our virtual participants, just like our face-to-face participants, appreciate the information shared this evening. And as this meeting has covered a general overview of the proposed project, please note that the project documents can be found in detail at russellcraigassociates.com, because as per the regulations of 2020, the EIA regulations, the Department of Environmental Planning and Protection expects that all development projects are posted on the website of the consulting firm doing the environmental management for all projects. So you can find further details there. After this meeting, the project will undergo further review. There is a twenty-one-day period for you to pose even more questions as you take in some of the information shared, or as you go to the project documents located on the website, and you wanna, you know, just take a good read of it in detail beyond what was shared this evening. You can pose your questions there. It's a twenty-one-day period for additional review from the public. After that period, Russell Craig and Associates is responsible for sharing a consultation report and answering all of your additional questions, which will be shared on the website. And you all can see the responses to your additional questions or queries regarding the project. After that time, oh, I see. The consultation report will be shared on the website after the department reviews the questions. You can also send your questions to inquiries@dpp.gov bs. Inquiries@dpp.gov bs. We're responsible for facilitating, gathering your questions, so that the environmental consultant and the developers can address them adequately. The report will be compiled and shared on the website, so that you can see all of the responses in totality. Whatever gaps need to be filled, or you feel it's missing, or some additional insight that you would want to see in the baseline assessment or any aspects of the project, you can post those queries or questions, and they will have them addressed.
We already have our board of directors in place at this point. I mean, it is a private company right now, yes. Yeah, and I mean, and we, it is our intention to be a very good corporate citizen. We're gonna be in the community here in Abakon in Elitwa. We're gonna be here to help out schools and the churches and the social civic organizations. So we plan to be here. I mean, we're not gonna be here just to take and take. It's not our intention to do that. So I mean, it is our intention to try to be our best corporate, good corporate citizen in these communities. I mean, we have, I mean, we have a responsibility to shareholders as well, you know, because I mean, you know, we have to pay them back, of course, and they're gonna want to see all this and some things. I mean, we have responsibilities also to the government through ERCA, through BPL, to be able to make sure that we're doing certain things properly and that we meet the requirements, regulatory requirements and stuff. So I mean, in terms of the quality of work and the quality of product you're gonna get, I mean, there's no question that you will be getting good, reliable service.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
I can make a recommendation, I can.
Yeah, there is a question in the chat. Before I go back to where you guys can pose your questions, Robert Hall asked, how many days of fuel storage on site? How many days of fuel storage is designated on, is designated or proposed on site?
Thanks for having us, thanks for the... Ten days.
Ten days is the response. So I was mentioning where you can pose your questions or queries or for the comments regarding the project. Again, you can send it to Russell Craig, sorry, you can review the documents at russellcraigassociates.com. Mr. Russell also has his email here, so please feel free to record that, so that you can send your questions directly to them as the environmental consultants for the project, and between the developer and himself, they'll make sure that your questions are answered. DEPP will facilitate also gathering questions and queries and comments, and it's inquiries@dpp.gov bs. And, well, based on, I guess, the legal framework and what's been done in the past, there's usually not another public consultation, but once the public consultation report is done, the department ensures that the general public is aware that it is available to be viewed. That's why we allow such a twenty, we allow the twenty-one-day time span, so that you get everything you wanna say in the comments, get your questions to us, and we will make sure that before we approve the project to proceed, the department, before we approve the project to proceed, they must answer your questions adequately and thoroughly. That is the goal. The project doesn't end here. They have only done the environmental baseline studies thus far. The department still awaits the environmental management plan, which we also have to review and ensure that they adequately address all of the mitigative measures that they seek to employ, based on what they found in their baseline studies. So that's the plan. Mr. Russell?
Sorry?
When did the notice of the meeting go out?
We started radio announcements the twelfth. Well, I mean, radio, I mean, radio...
By law, yeah, developers are expected. Okay, well...
We got radios, we added newspapers, well...
It's designated to be in the newspaper, all print media. The department requires that from all developers. And I wanna say for a period of two weeks, I think we require fourteen days for it to be in print media, all print media. It's all published on the website.
And we also sent out specific invitations to community members, like in some civic organizations.
Civic organizations and the island administrators.
We sent out specific invitations to them, alerting them about the meetings. I mean, it was a number of invitations that we sent out directly to persons in the community as well. The Chamber of Commerce, Fincais Media, Robin is represented from there.
And also for future, I think, even as the department, as we assist with these types of public consultations, we get a, you know, a continuous stakeholder listing that we are able to share in all of our islands, because we do rely heavily on the island administrators and our local offices here. But I think we probably need to tailor our own listing, so that all of the developers are aware who they need to be targeting, who needs to see these, see the notices, care about what's going on, and be able to adequately, you know, be present at these meetings, so... No, I'm not adamant about that. I am emphatically telling you, we don't have follow-up town meetings unless it's truly, truly warranted. And I wouldn't even say it wouldn't be a project of this type, but again, this project isn't done. The goal is, once we gather all of the information related to your concerns, once the developer and the environmental consultant gets the various responses in that consultative report, we will share it on the website. It must go on the website, which will be russellcraigassociates.com. And, uh-huh? Go ahead.
Yes, we are, we're, they're in process, within final stages here.
Well, not from our department standpoint, in terms of all the legal standing, yes. ERCA may require it, and that'll, the owners will be on the developer to organize it at the behest of ERCA. Yeah. Yes, my department, no problem. And thank you for sharing that bit of information. Any other question?
I mean, and then, I mean, for the, your concern about another town hall meeting, I mean, is it, you're worried that you may not get a chance to say or be able to give any additional information or concerns? Because, I mean, I think going forward, we would still be open to hearing whatever concerns you may have.
No, no, I don't think that was said. What did you say, said that was what we said? No, no, I don't think that was said, what did you say, said that was what we said?
No, no public consultation from a department standpoint, it's usually the, the management plan would also be placed on the website, and of course, as the faculty senate alluded to, additional comments and queries is, you know, is warranted, if it, if it needs to be addressed, they will address them directly to you as the public, that's usually how it works.
Right, and I mean, we'll, we'll be releasing our website probably in another week or so, where we'll have opportunities for, we have frequently asked questions, and then we also have a place there for you, if you want to ask a question as well. Well, that's what I'm saying, it hasn't been released yet, but we, we're going to release, yeah, we're going to release that, well, like I said, in about a week or so. Yeah. Yeah, definitely, that's one of our primary goals, to make sure that those things, if you don't have those issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mills, and further in closing, we want to thank all of you, if there are no other questions or comments, again, you've got the information on where you can put your different queries, where you can send the information, and we welcome you to do so, post as many questions as you like, and again, the developer and the environmental consultants are required to answer those questions, and the department is expecting them to adequately put forth a consultative report that addresses your concerns and answers all of your necessary questions. So again, have a good evening, everybody, we look forward-
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you for coming, and we have some refreshments at the bar.